We'll have to start the recording when the meeting starts, right?
Yeah.
Okay, we are live on YouTube.
So exciting.
Okay, so who do we got? Paul, we got you and me.
That's it.
So far, they'll be coming in. Tiffany's in the room.
Hi.
Hi, Tiff.
Hi.
Hello, Susan. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Don't look behind the screen.
Don't look.
What is that? Is that an actual partition you bought, or is that something you made?
No, I had, and I used it last week, or two weeks ago, but the color white was just awful, so we painted it.
Gotcha.
The other side has ducks on it. It's really heavy.
And if Kevin was on, he would say, "Your ducks in a row."
My ducks in a row.
Vern, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. How you doing?
Good, we can hear you.
All right. How's it going, Paul?
Good. How are you, Vern?
Good.
Hi, Fred. Fred has joined me in the room here, 119. So we have Tiffany here and Fred right now.
Hey, Fred. Sorry, no coffee.
I can't do coffee this late at night.
That's good, because I didn't buy you any.
That's because you're too cheap.
We are live on YouTube, so. I just told Fred we're live on YouTube, so.
I drink coffee and go to bed, so.
No, I can drink coffee at night. It doesn't affect me, so.
No, doesn't. But you know what does? Ice cream.
Oh. That's my downfall, Vern. I'm an ice cream man, so that's my downfall.
Yeah. That's my go-to when the sugar's down.
I don't, I do, I don't do Coca-Cola or coffee or anything chocolate, anything that has any trace of caffeine. I can't handle it.
Moose tracks, one of my favorites, so.
I love that. Perrys. Perrys has a, yeah, Moose Tracks or Panda Paws.
Shannon, you in? You can hear us?
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You, you look judicial, Shannon.
Why, thank you. This is my interpreting work chair.
With the background and, and your, I guess I would call it your scarf?
Yeah, yeah.
Looks like you're the judge, you're the judge sitting there.
He's got the, uh, the RBG look going there.
Nick is here. Can you hear us, Nick? He's waving.
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, good. I'll meet you now.
All right. John's on.
Hi, Bill.
Hi, John. How are you?
Yeah, I'm doing good.
I'm great. Doing well.
Good.
Of the wall, like the button off your painting or?
You decorated your... Behind you, I'm looking at your, you got a Christmas tree, and you had the wreath. You got something on the telescope.
My snowman. A snowman.
Oh, okay. With all these new Zoom meetings and everything, you have to, you have to remember what's in your background.
Very true.
And some, some of us more than others. Or your foreground.
There's, there's Dave.
Hi, Bill.
Looks foggy at your house.
I hope, I hope I don't get kicked off again. Last, last week I had to reboot my modem, and by the time I figured out how to do it, you guys were done. What'd you say? It looked foggy at my house? Yeah, that lousy Marlboro cigarette I have to smoke before the meeting.
Where's the dog? Is the dog in his cage?
I just put him in the kitchen. I hope he beats quiet for the time being.
Okay.
He's getting bigger and too active for me.
What's his name?
I named him Angelo, but I call him Angie.
Okay.
What kind of dog do you have, Dave?
Cocker Spaniel, three months, three months old.
Oh.
I had a cocker, and it passed away back in September. I missed him so bad, I had to go out and get another one.
I'm sure. Yeah, they're definitely a part of your family.
Linda's joined us. Your son is getting, getting their all set up.
Yes, my son is here. He's good. Thank you, Michael. Hey, I need all the help I can get.
Nice to have an in-house IT department. That's good.
Hey, yesterday I had a Zoom meeting with Bonaventure for a class, and it kept rejecting me, and so finally I grabbed my 11-year-old granddaughter and said, "Okay, Lily, what do I do?" She goes, "Am I?" I'm like, "Okay, I'm sad."
Well, just so everybody knows, we are live on YouTube right now.
Gotcha.
Jason, you connecting?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, we can hear you. So, when this one's coming.
Oops.
Kevin's on. There's Kevin.
I'm in with computer audio. Okay, here we go. Oh, WNBC.
Lens is on. Lens, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. I'm here.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Jason, how come you always look like you just got out of a tree stand?
What's that?
You always look like you just got out of a tree stand.
You keep cutting out as soon as you say the word that I'm looking for.
Tree stand.
Oh, I don't know.
Have you gone hunting yet, Jason?
No, I don't hunt.
Oh, okay. My son-in-law's been out a couple times.
I probably should. There's enough deer running around this town. I could have food forever.
Yeah, you have, one of my constituents is one of your neighbors, and he's called me a couple times about a lot of deer.
There were five in front of National Grid this morning when I went to work.
Wow.
One was a buck. Let's just say, I'm getting to where I feel like I'm gonna hit one more in town than not.
Yep. There's a family of four behind our house on Main Street, and they cross Main Street probably on a daily basis, and they just wait for the, you know, the traffic waits for them.
Get that DMP permit there, Bill. Call Rockefeller up and...
Yeah.
Sure, Nate will let us hunt, and he's, he's got that six acres, a lot right by the, the water sewage treatment plant.
That's National Grid.
Is it?
Yes, right at National Grid, right there.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. We, yeah. They're all hiding by the tank lots.
Get that permit and set your crew loose on them, Kevin. They won't be around long.
Okay, man. It's hunting season. They come into the sanctuary here. They're here.
Yeah, we gotta, we gotta show them they're wrong.
Over at East Field, or over, all over, over there.
Oh, yeah. And I'll tell you, they, they don't even care if you're near them. When I drive up Seneca, you know, from Alder to, they stand probably 10 feet from the street and just look at you as you drive by. They're not shy at all.
Last Saturday, they were running on the tracks right behind my house, and that, that's up, you know, that's up pretty high.
Yeah.
So, had three of them up there.
I got my first buck over the weekend, so.
Oh, good for you.
Good job.
Was it a baby buck, like your?
It, it bite me.
Just tape antlers on it, Kevin?
It was a six-point. The thing weighed 120 with caboose, and after the caboose was off, it was 80 pounds, so.
Who have to carry it, Kevin?
I actually, I called a buddy because his grandfather lived nearby, and he happened to be visiting, and he had a four-wheeler. I dragged it about 100 yards.
That's it? You could have put that thing on your shoulder.
I had a 14-year-old with me. I was carrying his gun, so.
He probably could have carried it on his shoulder.
I'll take it.
Bob Ring is now in, in 119 with, Fred is here with us, and Tiffany is in here, so.
But why do they not have, like, cameras in, in their own offices?
Uh, not sure. We got...
No matter where Bob is, he has a piss-poor internet connection.
Yeah, we got the, we got the, everybody up on the big screen here, so.
Right, but we can't see them. That's kind of my point, but that's okay. Okay, so it's after 6:30. I'll call committee to hold to order for Tuesday, November 21st, 24th. Let the record show that all committee members are present. Item one is financing bills, copy of this month's financing bills in their mailboxes. Anybody have any comments, questions, or concerns?
I had one quick question, just real quick. I wanted to know, if possible, the police and fire department, if they receive clothing allowance?
Sorry, what was the question?
If police and fire department received clothing allowance.
Yeah, according to the collective bargain agreement, they, they receive a clothing allowance. They receive, the police department receives $600 each per year, and I believe the fire department's at $500 each per year to replace uniform items that, that they're required to wear.
Okay.
Right. Really see a peek in that when we have new people come on, because they have the whole outfit they have to, to purchase.
Yep. Thanks.
Okay, good question. Anyone, anyone else? Okay, seeing none with someone like a sponsor?
I'll sponsor.
Sponsored by Alderman Witte. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Seconded by Alderman Anastasia. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, finance bills are approved and will be referred to tonight's regular meeting. Item two on our agenda, PL 6120 by Alderman Crawford, to amend the city of Ole Miss code ordinances, Chapter 12, housing code to include Article 6, short-term rental registration and licensing. Alderman Crawford.
Okay, thank you, Paul. So, the, you know, we've dug into this pretty well now. We received feedback from Kerry Kerper, some good suggestions and good discussion. Last time, we made the recommended changes to include the zoning board instead of the planning board. I reached out to Nick this afternoon, and he confirmed that those changes have been made. The, the revised PL has been sent to everyone. I'm not sure if you had an opportunity to look it over. Nick, that was the only major change. Is that correct, that we addressed? Everything else for his remain the same?
That's correct. We, we made the change to refer the R1, 2, and 3s to the zoning board.
Okay. And any concerns either from Nick or the mayor? Any feedback that you've received? Any issues with the zoning board, or is that, you think, that'll work?
I, I have not received any additional comments or suggestions since the last meeting.
Okay. Nick, you're, you're solid there? You're good?
No, I haven't heard back from the zoning board, but I would anticipate that if there was, you know, any activity in the zoning board, it would be initially probably, you know, a fair amount of them, and then it would probably taper off as they, as they get through it and the law progresses. So, I haven't heard that they can't handle it. I, I know them, having dealt with them, I think it's something they can handle. It's within their purview, and they should be able to accommodate it.
Will, and just for the last clarification, did we establish that existing Airbnbs, existing short-term rentals will be grandfathered in, or will they have to follow, they'll have to follow the rules of this law and become registered with the city?
Well, that, that's correct. We did not carve out any specific exemption for the existing Airbnbs, but for 99% of them, we have not had any complaints and/or issues, so I wouldn't anticipate it being a problem for those to get approved.
Okay, great. Okay, I'm, I'm good with it. Go ahead.
That was my, my point I was gonna make is that I, I don't like the idea of grandfathering in. I don't think we should let the, the, the existing ones go immune for, you know, indefinitely. So I definitely think that once we establish this, that there needs to be some kind of, you know, timeline for them to become licensed and then move from there. Jack?
Um, anybody off the top of their head know what, what is it, like, typical zoning board process? I mean, there's, I know with the planning board, it's like a, it's like a $160 fee. Is the zoning board like a free service, or is it like the similar price? I mean, I, I speak to a lot of landlords, so I just want to be able to be well-breasted before we...
It's, it's in the, it's in the resolution that was sent out today, but it's, it's actually $150.
$150, okay, gotcha.
But plus, there's a $60 annual fee for inspections, just like a rental.
Typical like a landlord, yeah, right, okay.
And, and, and so that, I mean, the other thing too is this only applies to those trying to open them up in the R1, R2s, R3s, downtown district. They bypass that process.
Right, and, and you're, to your point, John, it was your intention that we wanted to give the neighborhood a say, you know, in, in the, in the designation of these as being available for Airbnbs. Right, but somebody buys a building on North Union Street, and they want to turn the second floor into an apartment that they rent on. They won't need to go through this process. Correct. They'll still have to go through codes. They'll still have to pay the application fee, but they won't have to be referred to the planning board. Codes can make that decision on their own. Because it's still rent, right? Right.
Yeah, great. Well, thank you to, to Nick and to the mayor's office, and code enforcement did really most of it. I mean, I, thanks to Ed Jennings. Any other questions on this?
No, but John, thank you for bringing it to our attention, and I think it kind of, kind of cleans it up and makes it easier for these folks going forward, so thank you.
I, I thank, thanks to, you know, everyone on the council for your input. This, I know it's not a huge, it's not like we've got 50 of these, but hopefully if Ole Miss goes the direction we want it all to go, there will be more of these types of opening up around our community and in our revitalization, and so it's great to have this, to be a little proactive. We're a little bit behind the curve, but, but I think this is at least being more proactive than waiting for a massive problem, and, and so kudos to everybody.
Yep.
Good job, everybody.
So, that's, that's all I have.
So what's the timeline for this now? We have to publish it, right, or has to go in the paper, or it's not on for tonight for, for, for resolution approval, correct? Like...
Well, we have to approve the PL.
Right.
And then it'll, and then it'll go for resolution.
No, I, I know how the process works. I just, I didn't know if there was like a, thank you for that.
Sorry.
Hey, Bill, turn the screen to Tiffany, and she can explain it to us.
I guess what I'm asking is, is there like, uh, posting or two-week period, because it is not on, on the regular meeting tonight?
Yeah, it will be on for resolution the 22nd of December. Two limitations with the sign herald. They won't be able to get it posted in the paper as soon as we need them to, so it will just take a little bit longer.
So we'll be approving this tonight, referring it to the regular meeting on December 22nd?
That is correct.
Good deal. Anyone else, anyone have any, I lost my page, hold on. Anyone have any other comments, questions, or concerns? Okay, seeing none. Alderman Crawford, would you like to sponsor?
Yeah, please, Paul. Thank you. I'll make the move.
Okay, I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, 6120 is approved and will be referred to the regular meeting on December 22nd. Item two on our agenda, PL, I'm sorry, item three, PL 7620 by Mayor Aliot, authorize transfer of $1,322 from FO688340-412 to AO1510.412 for funding needed to pay for the water department's share of pavement opening.
Uh, there's some Bobs here. He's gonna speak on this. It's, it's, it's some housekeeping. The openings, I'll let Bob explain it.
Yeah, these are for the fill the openings that we do around the city. We get billed by the blacktop company called New Enterprise through the blacktops, so it's not, for several weeks that we put them between water and sewer and the general fund, we, we pay that voucher through the general fund and then do an annual transfer, like, to pay the water, water's share. So that's the amount of money that was spent patching waterline repairs.
And it has to come to resolution from the council because it's going from one fund to the other, so.
Okay.
Okay, sounds fine. Anybody have any comments, questions, or concerns? Okay, seeing none. Someone like to sponsor?
I'll sponsor.
Talked about Alderman Witte. Do I have a second? I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, 7620 is approved and will be referred to tonight's regular meeting. Item four is PL 7720 by Alderman Robinson, authorize the installation of a handicap parking space and related signage on West State Street in the first parking spot on the northeast corner of its intersection with North 12th Street. Alderman Robinson.
Thank you, Paul. Okay, just to recap a little bit, we're looking to put a handicap parking spot in the area that Paul just mentioned for a veteran-owned security company. This company has been in Ole Miss for quite some time. They are expanding to 1214 West State Street. They're gonna be operating out of that building for training purposes. Last meeting, we discussed getting information from the surrounding residents. Well, we were in luck. The, the surrounding residents were all pretty much the same landlord, so I talked to that landlord, and he sent me a letter requesting handicap sign for that one spot, and he said it will be beneficial to all three units. That is 1212, 1214A and 1214B for that building. The one of those is the T-Mobile. He said he gets customers there all the time that could use the parking spot. So that clarified the use and getting clearance from the surrounding constituents. I took the liberty to look up DMV information, and what I found was that DMV pretty much stated that any reserved parking spaces on the street are installed via local law and ordinance. You guys should have received that in your email. And then I also found that on-street parking spaces are reserved, that are reserved for people with disabilities are designated by local law. Apparently, there is a separate rule or separate laws from parking spots in parking lots versus on-street parking. And so for us, there's no rule on the length. There is a rule on the width, but that's for parking lots. We don't have to worry about curb cuts, because curb cuts are for loading zones, and again, loading zones are for parking spots, and we do have to ensure that it's the shortest route, and the first parking spot there would justify for that building, was all three are right there. And then we have some on the Chapter 12, Section 24, sorry, Chapter 24, Traffic, Section 24-113 covers the handicap parking, and we have a list of parking spaces throughout the city that are already on the books. I went to each and every one of these addresses and checked each one, and we have four that are, that would be similar to this one on West State Street, where they're actually in the street, and there are no curb cuts on those, and some of them, and the closest route to get to a corner curb is, is about a car distance away. So this one on 12th and State, I'd say is, is actually better. So the, our other ones were North First, or sorry, North Third, North Fourth, 13th Street North, West Henley, by the one by First Street, and Washington Street. Uh, and then and we already have ordinances in place for businesses that require them to keep the, their areas cleaned in front of their stores and lot for snow and other debris, so that would take care of anything that may or may not block handicap area. But I did want to bring up, Paul, I guess I have to ask you, we would need to update that ordinance for the handicap, because some of those streets that were listed were incorrect. I did, yes, I did send out an email with that new list, and I guess we would have to talk about that another time, but maybe do a PL for that, and maybe that can be in conjunction with this one, so that they would all, when we go to rewrite this one, if it passes anyway, if this one passes and gets added to the list, maybe we should go ahead and redo that entire list, and maybe recruit DPW to verify what I had sent for those streets, if that's possible. Mayor, have DPW get involved to verify those streets, to make sure those streets were all correct, and I didn't leave out any.
You have to sign them, right?
Yeah, that sounds good to me. Absolutely. I think that's, that's good work.
Yeah, DPW has a sign book that, that the, it may be updated in their sign book, and just, we never updated it in the, the city ordinance.
Okay.
So, but yes, they will assist with taking care of that and, and getting it correct.
All right. So otherwise, we're just looking to hopefully get that sign going forward.
Okay, no, that's great. Sounds, sounds, sounds good to me. Any comments, questions, or concerns? One thing, it's not really related to this per se, but maybe Bob Brink can answer this that I had. Wasn't there, I seem to remember some talk about undergoing some kind of project that would do like a, like a sign inventory almost, or like where we would go through our records and compare, like, every street... like every street to make sure every sign is where it should be. And I don't know, what what? Help me out here. Nick, you're nodding. What does that call?
Great, Paul. I remember this probably three or four years ago, maybe even a little longer. We we were envisioning undertaking that cataloging, for lack of a better word, where our specific parking spaces were on side streets, things like that. How far from the corner are signs throughout throughout the city? We we were discussing that before.
Be one of those things where you could find like, oh, well, this street corner had a no parking sign, but you know.
Yeah, and I and I can't remember if the mayor asked for it in the budget before and it just didn't get there or or what. But it was something that we need to look about doing going forward.
Yeah, yeah, it's almost like a you need to hire an intern or something like that.
And 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 exactly, but it's it's also from an enforceability standpoint as well.
Yeah.
You know, we we've got to have it as a law if we're going to be able to enforce it.
Right. We we need to, we do need to do take a complete inventory of what's out there, what's not out there, what signs are, you know, we have to replace because you can hardly read them and, you know, go through that. So it'll be a project. We'll we'll see how we can we can do this.
Well, and I don't know. I don't know where this falls in our priorities, right? Like there's some the finite number of resources and money and time, and maybe there's more pressing things we can be addressing, but it's it 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 kind of got me, you know, Vernon's comments kind of got me thinking about that. So I don't know. Maybe it's something we do piecemeal here and there, you know.
We could, we could, we could also, we could also search for, you know, maybe a intern, someone that's in in that field, looking for an internship that could could assist us there.
Right.
I mean, what was what was pressing thirty years ago when we had? You know, there's there's tons of things that come up every year that we we don't have money for or whatever. And and I get the un the unfunded mandates from the state that allow us to, you know, have to keep employing additional personnel to do stupid paperwork things for the state of New York. But at the same time, like, you know, twenty years ago, we we hired somebody to walk around and ding sidewalks, which were in less deplorable shape than they are now. You know, and trees and other things like that. So I don't know, just throwing that out there is a just a thought to mull over, not really pointing fingers.
Do you think it's a good idea or a bad idea?
I think I think it would be a good idea. I just, I like anything, where do you find the money for it? Somebody twenty years ago found the money for to have some kid during the summer to go around and ding sidewalks, you know, and ding trees and all sorts of stuff, so.
Well, you know, I went through my avenues because I have a lot of signs, as Bill pointed out, you can't even read. So I made a list of the sign you can't read and the address of the house it was in front of. So I've done my avenues. I could do the rest of my ward, but there's quite a few of them out there that need replaced, you know, just the side streets.
That's a great comment. Yep.
Yeah, homework after homework after the break. We all just go handle our own words. I like it.
We could go caroling while we're doing.
I love that idea. Love it.
You could deliver cookies.
Okay, so Vernon, would you like to sponsor the seventy-seven twenty?
Absolutely.
Okay, would someone like to second?
I'll second.
Second, Alderman Crawford, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Tiffany, what's the posting timeline for this one in terms of referral?
We are looking at the same timeline as.
As the other one?
The other one, but if I don't know if a week is cutting it close, especially with the break, but if you want to discuss this in committee next Tuesday, including all of the other changes. We can include that for the vote on the twenty-second. Totally up to you what you want to do.
Oh, well, the constituent was looking to get it done by, I think it was December fourteenth. I think that was a Monday. I don't have a calendar in front of me, but it, I mean, if if that's the best we can do, then I mean, that's the best we can do. At least it would go through and he would have it, you know.
Day the Electoral College elects the president-elect.
So what's the day then we we picked?
If we would have approved this last week in committee, we would have been looking at the fourteenth. But now we're looking at the twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
PL seventy-seven is approved and will be referred to the regular meeting on December twenty-second. I will make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Whit, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are adjourned and I will call to order the regular meeting of the common council for Tuesday, November twenty-fourth. Will the clerk hold the roll?
Alderman Whit?
Here.
Alderman Panis?
Here.
Alderman Doherty?
Here.
Alderman Crawford?
Here.
Alderman Robinson?
Here.
Alderman Anastasia?
Here.
Alderman Gonzalez?
Here.
Here. Please proceed with the invocation.
Father, as the events of the day continue to unfold, we seek your clarity and your peace. We know that you are you are with us as we gathered today to seek your counsel. Scripture reminds us, the more we seek you, the more you will find you. Lead our surrendered hearts to the path of your peace today. Come fully into our meeting, both as a group and individually, and sort our mortal feelings and thoughts that plague us. Cover cover us with a blanket of honesty and patience that is not of this world. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America.
One nation, under God, indivisible and just.
Reading, correcting, and approval of the minutes of the previous regular meeting.
The regular meeting of the Oleane Common Council was held on Tuesday, November tenth, twenty twenty at six thirty PM. Present, Alderman Gonzalez, Alderman Whit, Alderman Panis, Alderman Doherty, Alderman Crawford, Alderman Robinson, and Alderman Anastasia.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve the minutes from the previous regular meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Doherty, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. We move on to committee reports and unfinished council business.
Report from Strategy Planning Committee on PL seventy-one dash twenty to amend the city of Oleane Charter, Article Three, Edition Four, to include Section three point zero nine zero containing qualifications for the city auditor. Committee recommends approval referred to city attorney for resolution.
Okay, communications from the mayor.
Thank you, Paul. I want to let the council know that I've been working with our three legislators, Frank Higgins, Kelly Andriano, and Rick Smith to secure additional funding from the county for the airport. And today, the county passed its budget and we have secured an additional eighty-five thousand dollars for the help with the our match money for our projects at the airport. So I want to thank them for their efforts. I want to thank the Cataragus County Legislature and Frank Higgins and I have been talking and we are going to form a committee to of legis of county legislators. There'll be representatives from the city government and others to look at how we can better, how the aircart airport can better serve not only Oleane but Cataragus County and where we can get where we can get additional funding. So that'll be moving forward and we're very pleased that we have the the additional funding that'll help us out immensely. So.
Now, is that additional funding, is that eighty-five thousand dollars X every year, or is it eighty-five thousand dollars once?
It's eighty-five thousand dollars for the two thousand twenty two thousand twenty-one budget, Cataragus County budget. So no, it's not every year. We'll have to, you know, we'll have to work on that to get it money every year. So. But I think with forming this committee, people will get a better under legislators, not only, you know, Cataragus County. We'll get a better understanding of the importance of having the airport. And I've had several of the local business businesses and around Jim Stitt for one senior and junior. They talked to me about the importance of maintaining the airport. Oleane is moving forward. We're doing a lot of positive things and they think that if we if any, if we back off on the airport, it will hurt our progress. So, yeah, like Jim Stitt Senior said, anything to anything can, anything to hinder our progress could be a detriment to Oleane's future and the county, Cataragus County's future. So I'm pleased with that amount. It wasn't, we did ask for a hundred and twenty-five thousand. They gave it, they're giving us eighty-five thousand and we'll continue to work with our legislators and and the Cataragus County Legislature to to move the airport forward. So, thank you.
Mayor, does that still include the fifteen from the county?
No.
That's, so that's.
Yeah, the seventeen, it was seventeen. That's been increased to eighty-five.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Bill, if I if I could, for clarification, the the eighty-five that they've committed, that does that have to be used towards capital projects, investment, or or does that, can that go to offset our operating losses?
No, it'll be used for capital projects.
Okay. And and also, as the committee, as you're forming that committee, please, by all means, keep me in mind. I'd be more than happy to serve on that committee.
Okay.
I I spoke to a couple of county legislators and they mentioned that this was called Operation John Crawford. So I hope we can keep the airport alive, guys.
Yeah, I I just think it's, I mean, that that's a huge step to have a committee that's going to form to meet and talk about that place on a regular basis. I think that's what it needs.
Well, if 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 somebody has to be the squeaky wheel to finally get them to to put up or shut up on it, you know, I mean, that's that's what the city needs, right? We 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 claim that we're all in this together, so, you know, let's let's work as a team to to try to keep the and make it a sustainable operation. So I I think that's that's a step in the right direction.
We got the KY, John. Thanks. Grease the wheel? No? Put up or shut up? I don't know.
Okay, so any other communications from the mayor?
Oh, you all received an email from me today outlining the police reform and reinvention collabor collaborative. So I know Vern said he was going to bring this up tonight, so I wanted to update everybody what's going on. So I sent you an email. Letters will be going out Monday with the date of the first meeting for this. And I still have just a couple of people I have to hear back from. So we're moving forward with it. It is becoming a reality.
Okay, anything else, Bill?
Going to be a large committee. It's going to be about twenty-two people on it with everything that every entity that the the governor's and his guidelines is recommending that be on this this committee, so.
Mayor, who's going to run this committee?
Pardon me?
Who's going to run this committee?
It'll be Chief Rowley.
Your silence?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, any other? Okay, seeing none, miscellaneous communications?
We have none.
City official reports?
We have none.
Proposed legislations and referrals?
PL seventy-three dash twenty by Alderman Crawford, referred to regular meeting Tuesday, November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty for resolution by council president. PL seventy-four dash twenty by Mayor Eliot, referred to regular meeting Tuesday, twenty-fourth, twenty twenty for resolution by council president. PL seventy-five dash twenty by Mayor Eliot, referred to regular meeting Tuesday, November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty for resolution by council president. PL seventy-six dash twenty by Mayor Eliot, referred to committee of the whole Tuesday, November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty by council president. PL seventy-seven dash twenty by Alderman Robinson, referred to committee of the whole Tuesday, November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty by council president. PL seventy-eight dash twenty by Alderman Robinson, referred to Public Safety Committee by council president.
Okay, so before we begin the public comment section, I'd first like to take an opportunity. Anyone on the council would like to make a comment, please do so at this time.
Oh, I'd like to make a comment.
Sure, go ahead.
I just want to take this opportunity because we're coming up on Thanksgiving just to take a few minutes for all of us to remember all of our health providers, the people that work at the hospital. You know, we kind of take them for granted, along with our first responders, the folks at the grocery store, our mailman that are out there. And these health providers show up at work every day to take care of COVID patients, putting themselves and their families at risk. And I just think we just haven't thanked them enough. So being the season of Thanksgiving, I just wanted to give a shout out that we thank you and we appreciate everything you do.
Okay, very good. Anyone else?
Paul, if I could, quick?
Of course.
Oh, thanks. No, I I wanted to just reach out and and make a request to the the mayor and as well as the the police chief and the fire chief that that in the coming months, in the coming, I should say, in the coming weeks, if we could receive an update on the status of the police and fire departments as well as, you know, their strategy, recruitment and retention efforts and and just get get a bit of an update there on the direction of of those departments.
Okay, very good. So if there's no further comment, the clerk, clerk, please read the your statement there, Lance.
The public comment portion of the common council regular meeting is established to provide members of the community with the opportunity to publicly state their views, both their concerns, or to provide input pertaining to any issue affecting city government. Additionally, the mayor, common council members, and city department heads encourage any person with questions to contact them at their offices.
So that being said, I will open the public comment section. If anyone, I'm not sure how this works, Bill, they have to like raise their hand or?
Yeah, I I have. Yeah, okay, I have one to raise their hand. It is time alone. I'm going to allow, okay, he is. Ty, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Just audio? There's no video?
Is that on me or?
I don't know.
Hold on.
No, I said there's no video.
Okay.
So first, I would like to thank Alderman Robinson for bringing up the nor or the police committee with the mayor to let him know that we were interested in finding out what was going on about that. I had planned on speaking about that tonight because when we first sat down with the mayor this summer, he stated that he would handle the police committee with the best interest of the community. But it seems as soon as he had obtained the power, he began to work against the committee. First, it was you need to send a letter of interest, then you need to send, turn into a resume. I understand in some circumstances how a resume could be useful. At the same time, I also understand that it is a deterrent from keeping people mostly adversely affected by overpolicing and applying communities and residents that have suffered from overpolicing, profiling, prejudiced treatment by law enforcement are more likely to have a criminal record Profiling prejudiced treatment by law enforcement are more likely to have a criminal record in periods of incarceration. To require a resume from someone to prove that they have been treated unfairly unjustly by the police and deserve. Or to have to request to be part of the conversation is discriminatory and oppressive. The governor's executive order number two oh three specifically states, as I now quote from paragraph thirteen. The political subdivision in accordance with the police agency must consult with stakeholders. Members of the community with emphasis in areas with high numbers of police and community interactions, unquote. He goes on farther to say the reform should be quote tailored to the specific needs of the community. And general promotion of improved police agencies and community relationships based on trust, fairness, accountability and transparency. And which seek to reduce the racial disparities in policing, unquote. These steps this local government has taken or failed to take thus far has instead causing distrust. And appearance of unfairness, no accountability and the lack of transparency. The people in this community expect and deserve better leaders. We pay attention. We know who. We know there are a few of you that do care about the the community. Alderman Witt, Robinson, Crawford, Anastasia, we thank you and you are appreciated. Everyone else might want to think about doing a different hobby since that's how you treat your your obligation to your citizens. I would ask that if the police chief is the one who is running the police committee. Wouldn't that be a conflict of interest, first of all? Second of all, who we're we're, I understand that this isn't a question and answer. So I'm just gonna leave it as I would help, I would hope that the council would think about the statement that the mayor just made about the police chief. Running the police committee. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that excellent comment. Anyone else?
We have one more here. Looks like Daniel of Gaten. Okay, you should be a.
I guess I just unmuted myself. Could you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Tuned in tonight. Thanks for bringing up the police reform committee. It's a committee that's a little past due. Not a little, a lot past due. I was interested in hearing what everybody had to say about it, but it struck my interest with something that Ty. Hit on a little bit too. With the police chief Riley heading the committee, I think you might have just lost faith. From the community of a fair, equal and just committee. To ask somebody to head a committee who has openly stated in an open forum. That he doesn't even believe that this process needs to happen is a little bit counterintuitive. I, this this committee was supposed to be formed months ago. Yeah, it wasn't. I don't know how you guys are gonna go through two hundred, a two hundred book page, two hundred pages. And get this all done by April or come up with a plan. And to have somebody headed that doesn't even believe that it needs to happen. You're setting yourself up for failure before you even start. I believe that there's probably good people on that committee who want to do good work and who want to do the work of the people. But we all know that you can't get work done if your leaders don't agree that work needs to get done. And basically, that's just what happened tonight. And I had all faith and all expectations that this would get done. At least maybe not completely done by April, but a plan to maybe continue on past April. With a with a plan to the governor. With all due respect to Chief Riley, he's on his way out the door as he's told us plenty of times. And to have him had this committee up, I think is a disservice to the community and obviously we didn't listen to. The constituents of this community when you guys made that choice. And I hold. The mayor and the council head solely responsible for this because you guys are the two leaders of of these two. Of of these situations. So at the end of the day. If you want to lead, you gotta take responsibility for good and responsibility for the bad. And this one's for the bad. Unfortunately, now it's gonna rely on the people on a committee to basically keep the chief in line. And and get the work done and that's unfortunate. Because it should be the other way around. And I do commend you, mayor, for going out and getting money for the airport. As a private pilot myself, I believe in the airport. I believe that it should be there. I believe it's an asset to the community and it's about time that the county has. Kick some more money in for that airport and it's about time that they've stepped up to the plate. And with with Stitt on board for it, we know that some progress will get made and some things will get done. And it's a valuable resource. And so it's about time that the county kicked in, but I'm sorry to hear for about the police reform board. I was excited about it and like you can say, you just let the air out of our balloons with who you headed it up with and that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you once again, Mr. Gaten. Anyone have any other comments? Anyone else?
There's no one else, Paul. It's, oh, wait a minute. Ty Malone has raised his hand again. Do you want to let him speak again?
Might as well.
Okay. Go ahead.
Oh, sir, I I didn't raise my hand again.
But he, I don't, I don't think they, he unraised his hand.
Okay.
Sorry about that. Okay, no one else, Bill?
No, no one else is raising their hand.
Okay, I will call the public comment section closed. We move on to finance and bills.
The auditor has processed bills and claims against the city of Olean as previously submitted to each alderman. And recommend payment thereof. Whereas the auditor has presented to the common council. Bills and claims against the city of Olean totaling nine hundred ninety thousand four hundred fifty dollars and fifty two cents. For the budget and recommend payment thereof. Now therefore be resolved. That the same be in in all hereby audited and allowed and the auditor is hereby authorized. And directed to draw warrants for the payments thereof at the amount at the amount set opposite its respective claims.
Okay, any last minute comments or questions on finance and bills? Okay, seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Dory?
Yes.
Alderman Crawford?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion care seven two zero.
Okay, resolutions.
Resolution eighty six dash twenty, PL sixty S eight dash dash twenty. By Alderman Witt, seconded by Alderman Crawford. To amend the city of Olean court of court of ordinances, section twenty four dash eighty one. To include a twenty mile per hour speed limit on a portion of street in Hamilton Avenue. While school is in session.
Okay, so we did discuss this in committee. Any comments, questions or concerns? Okay, seeing none, will the clerk please call roll?
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Dory?
Yes.
Alderman Crawford?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion care seven two zero. Resolution eighty seven dash twenty, PL sixty seven dash twenty. By Alderman Witt, seconded by Alderman Dory. To authorize the installation of school zone. Speed reduction and pedestrian crossing signs on Main Street and Hamilton Avenue. In the vicinity of Bodmanville School Building.
Okay, once again discussed in committee, any comments, questions or concerns? Okay, seeing none, will the clerk please call roll?
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Dory?
Certainly.
Alderman Crawford?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And Alderman Gonzalez?
Yep.
Motion care seven two zero. Resolution ninety dash twenty. PL seventy three dash twenty to authorize the sale of one zero one three Washington Street to a private entity. We are going to sponsor for that ball.
Okay, before we do sponsors, any comments, questions or concerns? Okay, seeing none, would someone like to sponsor?
Is this, is this the Washington Street project?
Yes.
I'll I'll do, I'll sponsor that, please.
I'll second.
Sponsored by Alderman Crawford, seconded by Alderman Dory. Will the clerk please call roll?
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Dory?
Yes.
Alderman Crawford?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion care seven two zero.
Oops, that was the airport one, Paul, John. Just kidding.
Should I keep going?
Uh, yeah, please, let's not, yeah.
Resolution ninety one dash twenty, PL seventy four dash twenty. To authorize the mayor to enter into an interim municipal agreement. With the Cataragus County to allow the county to assume the responsibility and expense. For the collection of the county tax payments. We also got an sponsor for that.
Okay, before we do sponsors, any comments, questions or concerns? Okay, would someone like to sponsor?
I'll sponsor.
Sponsored by Alderman Witt, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Alderman Dory. Will the clerk please call roll?
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Dory?
Yes.
Alderman Crawford?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion care seven two zero. Resolution ninety two dash twenty, PL seventy five dash twenty. Resolution authorizing free parking on West State Street and North Union Street. As well as in all city of Olean parking lots on November twenty seventh, twenty twenty. Through January first, twenty twenty one. We also go into a sponsor.
Okay, well, we do questions first. Any comments, questions or concerns?
That's a good thing.
Okay, good comment. Any anyone else? Okay, seeing none, would someone like to sponsor?
I'll sponsor.
Sponsored by Alderman Anastasia. Would someone like to second?
Second.
By Alderman Witt? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Dory?
Yes.
Alderman Crawford?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And Alderman Gonzalez?
Yep.
Motion care seven two zero. Resolution ninety three dash twenty, PL seventy six dash twenty. By Alderman Witt, seconded by Alderman Gonzalez. Resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from line item F zero six dash eight three. Four zero point four one two to eight zero one five one one. Zero point four one two for funding needing to pay for the water department's share. Of pavement pennies.
Okay, discussed in committee at the hall. Any comments, questions or concerns? Okay, seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Witt? Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Dory?
Yes.
Alderman Crawford?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion care seven two zero.
Paul, before we adjourn, I've got a few items that we need to go into executive session for. But Nick, can you, in order to do that. We're gonna have to get a few people off of this call. Or Nick, can you weigh in? Is this something we could set up just a separate. Zoom meeting with just the council to discuss these, these. Executive session items?
You're muted.
You have to unmute yourself.
Do you want to go into executive session now, but use a new Zoom meeting to do it?
I'm sorry.
You want to go into executive session, but use a new Zoom meeting to achieve that, right? Not not from this one?
Well, we can, we can shut down the recording. We can shut down the YouTube recording. And we can, you know, every, like the signers would have to go off and just so we only have the council and.
Yeah, if you can manage all that on your end, then we could go read into executive session from here.
Remember, from like a YouTube like recording perspective, you still have to stitch it all back together for the, you know what I mean? Like, I don't know, just. Throwing that out there, that sounds like a lot more of a task.
I think we can.
Well, I guess the question would be is then, can we adjourn this meeting and go into a separate one or do we have to? Do executive session while we're in session for a meeting here?
I think it's a gray area right now. There aren't any real ground rules on on how we do that. I I think if you could achieve it by. Logging off the public right now, stopping the YouTube feed. And and any recordings and go into an executive session and then just adjourn from there. You could do that. I don't see you that you'd be out of line either terminating this meeting altogether and starting a new meeting. Yeah, I think either way, you're gonna be complying with the spirit of the public officer's law. And how it's done, so.
So why don't we just kill the YouTube feed, kick the signers off and we'll just call it executive session?
I signers.
I'd support that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Before we, before we do that, can I just say one thing? Say it earlier. I just want to let the public know, we held our first. Equality and inclusion committee meeting and it went very well. We did a lot of brainstorming. We talked about our mission statement. And it, our committee seems to be really enthusiastic and I think we're gonna do well. And we're going to be meeting every two weeks for a while. So I just want to thank the mayor for setting that up. And all of our committee meeting, committee people for attending and I'm looking forward to our next meeting. Thank you.
That's great, okay.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead. Jason's gonna shut.
So I'll make a motion to go into executive session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Crawford, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Oh, okay, we are in executive.